Welcome everyone to... ...our nomination.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The sound of your mic's wrong.
Alright, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, thank you for your time tonight. I'm the applicant and the architect. This mic's working. Steve Richard. We've reviewed the conditions, the overview of the conditions and find nothing unexpected there. I was looking for a clarification from staff on the landscape condition eighteen to landscape that eastern slope overlooking the abandoned glass plant. The departure from some of our understandings during pre-submital review and I just need to have a clarification on that being added. Well, I appreciate staff's effort on this. It's been a great process working with Victorville as usual. Do you have that site plan by any chance that we looked at, the developed site plan? You had up on the board earlier? It's a pretty extensive slope area on the east side. We're not going to be adding any tributary stormwater to it. We'll be conducting all our stormwater back to the retention structures. So I'm wondering if staff would consider running that landscape back say to a point where the building footprint is and then staying with the top landscape up at the top. When you look at that slope, it goes all the way down to many properties that are not landscaped on that slope. And I think that's a service road serving an island property if you will. It's not really a street per se. So I'm just wondering if down the road if there's some discussions about where those sightlines are because most of the comments appear to be aesthetic in nature, which I really appreciate. And I'm just wondering if there's some comments or some ability down the road to talk about where those sightlines are and be consistent with what some of the other developments have had to do beyond that. That's all. And now we don't have any...
Are there any feelings on that from the commission? I... The way I understand it right now is that we don't... A landscape plan was not submitted at this time.
That's correct.
Full plan. And we're discussing the slope portion from where the flat area of the property slopes down to that service drive. And are you saying that you ultimately would not want to have to improve or landscape that slope portion?
Well, that property's the last cowboy up there because of some of the constraints associated with that slope. So from a construction budget standpoint, we're looking to mitigate what might be unnecessary costs. Obviously, the aesthetic is an important concern. And we're hoping maybe we can talk about sightlines, the reality of what that sightline looks like from the public viewing point as opposed to enhancing the glass plant and that service road on that slope. That's all.
Yep. And I'm... My only personal concern on that would be, I know for a fact, driving that road all the time, that you can see that slope, you know, and it might... Very beautiful design you've made. It might degrade that design a little bit. And because that is kind of almost a wall of...
Very good.
Dirt and weeds. When the time comes to deal with this, would you be in agreement to put a plan in that and work with staff that you would want to...
We submitted a concept landscape as part of this. And it was designed based on some pre-submital comments about how far that landscape would actually go back. And during that early stages of design development. So it was a change from what we anticipated, that's all. And so if you have any other questions, we're here to answer any questions tonight for the planning commission.
So you're okay with keeping number eighteen and we address it when you put your plan in?
No, I need to go back and speak with the owner and let him be aware of it, but...
Because personally, I can't speak for the rest. But I don't think we would need to have super strict standards on that slopes as the same as the full site. But I would not, probably not be in favor of just leaving it raw.
Absolutely.
Because it sticks out so much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to us on item number one? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a decision.
Chairman, I move that we find a project categorically exempt under section 15332 entitled infill development projects of the state guidelines to implement the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt Planning Commission Resolution P-18024 approving case number Plan 1800025, subject to all conditions attached.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter, second by Commissioner Huber. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Case number PLAN1018-00025 has been approved.
Thank you. It's been approved. Thank you, Mr. Richard. Moving on to item number two, please. I'm sorry, I got... On our report here, it does show that the applicant is... Looks like they're still working out some issues on item number two. So the applicant and staff are requesting a continuance of this item to our next meeting of May 9th. However, I do would like to open up the public hearing at this time for any comments because I do see I have a couple of cards. So I'll open up the public hearing and the first card I have is Mr. Phillips.
Thank you Chairman Kurth and fellow commissioners for having me here. James Phillips at 18484 Highway 18. Here to support the next speaker, my mom, and represent the property owner two doors down. So we support and sympathize with the applicant. They approached us for an adjacent parking reciprocal agreement. And while we wanted to cooperate with them, we have some concerns about our own tenants in that building that we own, primarily keeping them there and keeping them happy with parking situation. So that's why we didn't grant them the reciprocal parking agreement. It's hard enough to keep properties occupied in that area of town mainly for a lot of reasons, which I might expand upon later, but just briefly if I can. So we already have applicants or people parking unauthorized in the back of our building and carpooling. So we're already in the process of ordering unauthorized parking will be towed away at owner's expense signs. So that's something that we're already dealing with, believe it or not. I don't know who would want to park in that back alleyway with all the activity that goes on in the restaurant next door that's vacant and the old Teasers nightclub, maybe AK, the Knife and Gun Club or whatever it used to be. So anyhow, there's a lot of activity and we just drove by there tonight. And I don't know what the planning commission can do about cleaning that up, but that might be first on the agenda before tenants or owners reciprocate parking there. Anyhow, again, our concern is for our tenants. Probably already the restaurant people are parking in that parking lot and we don't have a lot of complaints about that. Thank God for that so far. But that's kind of what we're after. I might offer some other solutions to the property owner. The vacant lot behind there is vacant and could be purchased or maybe even leased for additional parking. The back of the restaurant where they're at right now, they only have three spots and there's outdoor area there. I don't know if that's part of the 800 square foot expansion they're planning, but certainly, you know, all that needs to be... but certainly, you know, all that needs to be taken into consideration. So with that, I'd just say also the adjacent site is available for sale. That restaurant is on the market for sale as maybe another opportunity for them to expand their operation. And that's typically when you grow a business and it's successful, you purchase other real estate, or you lease other real estate, or you solve that problem in other ways rather than asking for reciprocal parking agreements from everybody, and then it doesn't become your neighbor's issue as well. So that, I'll leave you and let the next speaker.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Charlotte Phillips.
My name is Charlotte Phillips, and I reside at one zero eight two three Catepwa in Apple Valley. And I've been a part owner of this building for thirty-eight years. And we built the building because the building that we were renting had a very limited number of parking spots. So we bought two lots, and we got a total of thirty parking spots. There were about fifteen to each spot, and I believe that that's about what's on there today. And number one, my building is leased, and when you lease the building, you lease the parking spots that go with it. So when this gentleman came and wanted me to let him park on there, it wasn't even anything that I had control over. That property is leased. What I'm concerned about is eight hundred and eighty square feet added to this building that has already had an outdoor parking spot open for...so that they could accommodate more diners, has taken out several of their parking spot. I don't know whether it has to be an environmental impact, but it has to...you have to tell me how many parking spots he's going to have after he adds more to that building, because it appears to me that there's no way that it can accommodate his clients. So I hope you'll keep that in mind. That building has had a lot of trips for me to the Planning Commission. I still recognize a couple of people here that have heard me go through the taser bit, and when I drove down that back alley tonight, I could have cried. What's going on back there now, it does not speak very well for this city community. Thank you.
Thank you. Your comments have been made. Part of the record, sounds like there might be a little bit more work to do, but we will be looking at this item again next month. Is there anyone else to speak to us on item number two? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll make a motion to continue this item... Oh, I'm sorry, I'll open the public hearing back up. Can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Chairman, commissioners, my name's Joe Mazariegus. I'm at one two three seven one Antelope Drive, Victorville, California, nine two three oh one. I'm working with the...I'm doing some of the planning work that we're doing for the building, and I just wanted to address a little bit of their concerns, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Okay. I know that parking is an issue. As we understand, there's three lots on this property that basically have a understood prescriptive shared situation. It's never been where a actual reciprocal parking agreement has been requested. Actually, that was brought up by Planning Department for us to see if there was a history of that, first of all, one that was already set up, and then, second of all, if not, to try to attempt to obtain one, if possible. I do understand their concerns about parking and that that can become an issue. However, we feel that most of the parking that's going to be taking place at the restaurant, it's going to be an offset hours from the times of operation that the tenants are going to be having. Most of the traffic on that property at one four two eight one happens between eight o'clock in the morning, nine o'clock in the morning, until about four thirty, five o'clock, where the restaurant's business hours are very quick during lunchtime, because most of the food that's being prepared is for pickup. And so there's not very much, a huge amount of parking that's going to be used up. And then in the evenings, well, in evenings, that's dinner time. So we're talking six thirty, seven o'clock typical dining times that we have, and we don't feel like there's going to be a huge conflict with their hours of operation versus the hours of operation that the restaurant has already established and will continue having, you know, throughout its business. We feel that we're doing a very good job with the development that we have and what we're proposing to Planning Department. I think they've agreed that they like the aesthetics, the layout, and how the site would work out. Now, currently, right now, the proposed addition that we're proposing is actually in an area that already has outdoor seating in its place. So we're really just trying to do two things. One is bring the building up to a much better caliber of aesthetics that we would improve, and at the same time, be able to enclose the area that we already have for eating because of the weather, the elements, and of course, you know, for the convenience for our patrons. So those are some of the key points that we want to make. I know that there's perhaps some people parking in their parking areas. However, we have multiple pictures, and you can see that there's very little parking on our end, where it's that during business hours, at five o'clock, their parking lot is pretty much empty. There's not one single car out on that parking lot, where it's like in ours, we have maybe three cars out there. So most of our patrons are going to be picked up during lunch hours, and then in the evening when they come in and so forth, it won't conflict with the parking that their either employees or their customers would require. So we feel that there's not very much that we're going to be impacting on their parking if this were to move forward and be approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak to us on Agenda Item Number Two? I will close the public hearing, and I'll make a motion to continue item number two to the Planning Commission May ninth, two thousand and eighteen meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Kurth, second by Commissioner Marsh, to continue ADMN one seven dash zero zero four four to the May ninth regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Three, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kurth. Item number three is case DEV sixteen dash zero 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 six. It is a general plan amendment to modify the street cross-sections within the circulation element with a proposed negative declaration. This would propose...would be proposed citywide and would affect our master plan roadways. The city's been working on this proposal for over a year now, and it actually included a couple of joint workshops with the city council. And at our last joint workshop, the Planning Commission and city council came to a consensus to move this project forward for consideration at this hearing. So we have the complete proposal in front of you today. Essentially, this proposal takes our master plan roadways within the city of Victorville and brings it into compliance with the city's non-motorized transportation plan, also complying with the state's Complete Streets Act, which is geared towards bringing roadways into a design that safely accommodates all users, such as bicyclists, pedestrians, as well as motorists. We have an add-on of the...today, it was submitted by the Building Industry Association in support of the proposal. Staff has, as you are aware, staff has worked closely with the building industry to bring forward a appropriate design with appropriate exactions and gives you a proposal that's still creating a safe design, which is efficient and aesthetically pleasing for future development. What staff recommends is for the Planning Commission to open the hearing, take any testimony, and ultimately recommend approval of this proposal to the city council. Staff's available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Good. I will open up the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Three. Is there anyone here to speak to us on item number three? Okay, seeing no one, I will...I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend city council approval of a negative declaration attachment F and adopt resolution number P dash seventeen dash zero five eight, attachment E recommending city council approval of case number DEV sixteen dash zero 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 six.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh, with a second by Commissioner Do to approve case number DEV one six dash zero 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 six as condition. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And I'd like to make one quick comment before we go on. This item, we've been working on here within the city for quite a while. There's been a number of revisions, and I'd like to thank the city staff, primarily the planning experts and the engineering department. A lot of work went into this. We actually did some debating. We had a couple of city council workshops to get to where we're at with this, what I feel is very important and now a solid plan. So I'm happy to see it done. Thank you. Agenda Number Four, please. Yes, sir.
As a result of the petitioner submitting a statement, I'm going to abstain on this, on item number four. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Agenda Item Number Four is planning case number PLAN eighteen dash zero 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 eighteen. It's a conditional use permit with an environmental exemption to allow for the expansion of an existing charter school, which is Mojave River Academy, into two additional suites within the same building located at one two three four Palmdale Road. As you may recall, this item was continued from the March fourteenth Planning Commission meeting, largely in part due to public comments that were received from a local school district opposing the proposal. Just to fill you in on where we left off, the site as proposed, it's maintained in a satisfactory condition, parking meets Title sixteen standards, and the project has been determined to be categorically exempt from CEQA. That being said, after the public comment was received at the last meeting, staff wanted to follow up specifically on the education code excerpts that were noted by the applicant for their allowances moving forward for the operations of the charter school. Staff reached out to the San Bernardo County Superintendent of Schools, as well as the California Department of Education, both of which declined to formally comment on the project. It was, however, noted during discussions with San Bernardo County Superintendent of School staff that the use of the noted education code exemption is happening statewide, so it's not a local or a county issue, it's a state issue going on. Based on those discussions, as well as review of the education code excerpts, recent court cases, which is Anderson Unified School District versus Justice Secondary Homeschool, and discussion with the city attorney's office, it would appear as though the education code allowances noted by the applicant are applicable in this case and would allow them to operate future locations at this site as they propose, which is converting their existing resource center into an individual charter school, thereby the provisions of Education Code four seven six oh five point one D would be applicable in this case. Therefore, based on that, staff has provided two options of recommendation on this case moving forward, both of which are void of educational code references, and they are based solely on conformance with land use, the development code, and the general plan. Additionally, staff has received, after the printing of the staff report, comment letters, one from Victor Valley Union High School District, one from Victor Elementary School District, both of which are in opposition to the proposal. It's staff interpretation that the education code allowances are still applicable as noted in the staff report. Further, staff received comments from the legal counsel for Mojave River Academy, who noted that staff's interpretation of the education code was correct in the original staff report and recommended approval of the project. That being said, staff would recommend the Planning Commission look at the evidence, look at the presentation, the staff report, and the follow-up memorandum, and either take action on option A, which is to approve the project based on the findings contained in the staff report, or option B, to deny the project based on the findings based in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions at this time for the staff? Okay, since there's no questions, I'm going to go ahead now and open up the public hearing, and we've only got a couple of items left, so I'm assuming a lot of people are here for this item, looking out into the room. I also have a pretty thick stack of cards of people that have acknowledged that they want to speak. So what we're going to do is we typically do when we have a full room, and by the way, I thank you all for being here. I love to see a full room. This is what this process is for. But what we're going to do when we have a lot of speakers is we're going to limit each one to please no more than three minutes each, okay? And our staff has a timer over here that will go off after three minutes. And the other thing we ask is, a lot of times in these cases, when groups will come up, each and every one of you are very, very important, what you have to say and testify to us, but we just ask that you don't keep repeating yourself on the exact same thing, okay? If you have something new to say, perfect, and if you agree with the other speakers, let us know that you agree, okay? Appreciate that. So I'm going to start out with these cards, and they are in no order, no specific order, they're just how they were handed to me. First one is Dale Edder.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Thank you so much for letting us speak on this, having an opportunity to speak on this. Thank you for...sorry, I lost my train of thought here. We are in opposition. We're here to oppose this, and we outlined it in the thing, and I just want to say that we're the Victor Elementary School District. My name is Dale Edder, Director of Facilities.
I'm Lori Clark, Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services.
Victor Valley Union High School Board member, Mr. Jose Barrios, was correct in the statement on March fourteenth on the public hearing where the Victor Elementary should be part of this discussion, and now we are here to be heard in this matter, which will impact our community and our students, and we'd like to express our strong opposition. As detailed in our letter to the council, or the commission, I keep calling you guys the council, I'm sorry, April fifth, two thousand and eighteen, in the letter to the commission, Mojave River Academy, current operation and proposed expansions are unlawful. I have copies of that letter with me today if you did not receive it. Would you like me to pass them out?
Can I take a look at it quick? I think we...I think this is a letter that we do...did get today. I'm not sure if we have that in our...okay, might as well. If you got them, we'll take them.
Mojave River Academy already operates two sites in Victorville outside the boundary... Mojave River Academy already operates two sites in Victorville outside the boundaries of Oro Grande, one at 16519 Victor Street here in Victorville, and the Resource Center at 12384 Palmdale Road in Victorville. The Victor Street address is the charter school's official address filed with the California Department of Education. That the school's contact information for purposes of state funding is located within the Victor Elementary School District makes it particularly suspicious that the Victor Elementary School District did not receive notice of Mojave River Academy's proposed expansion until after the March 14th, 2018, public hearing. This violation of Victor Elementary School District's due process rights requires that the requested expansion be denied.
Furthermore, Mojave River Academy's expansions proposal contains incorrect information. Whereas the charter school represented to this commission that they have an anticipated enrollment of 250 students, census data submitted by Mojave River Academy to the California Department of Education proves that the charter enrolled 1,392 students in the 2016-17 school year. Notably, of those 1,392 students in 2017, only 16% met the state standards for English Language Arts and 3% met mathematics state standards. Even fewer exceeded state standards. This school is not of educational benefit to Victorville students and is currently operating in violation of the law. Mojave Rivers, River Academy's proposed conditional use permit should therefore be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just noticed that usually our protocol is that I will usually invite the, the actual applicant up first, and in this case, the applicant is Mojave River Academy. I'm sorry, I kind of jumped forward to general comments. If, if the applicant Mojave River is here and would like to speak at this time, I'll welcome that, otherwise I'm just going to go, you know, through, through the cards with people's names on them. Yes, sir.
Hi, thank you for having us. My name's Tom Moselwhite, 12384 Palmdale Road. I'm this, I'm the building administrator. Just to give you an idea of who we are and what we do, we're an independent study charter. We take in the kids that the system has failed. When I get kids, they're usually severely behind in their credits. They've either come from bullying situations, or for whatever reason, they cannot, they cannot thrive in the situation they're in, and we take them in and we succeed with them. For the comments that were made earlier, I can only say that that's more of an indictment of the school system's failure, not ours, because we fixed the problem and then we graduated them, so we're doing, we're doing our job. I'm trying to make this as quick as possible so I don't waste your time. To address the, some of the issues that were brought up from the last meeting, first off is we're not creating a new school. This is an expansion to my current building. It's no different than the expansions going on at Victor High right now. We are in a process of rechartering, so I will become my own school independent, but this is not going to be a second school in the same site. It is one school total. It was mainly brought about by the need to make more space for my kids to get a better education. That's what it's all about. That's all it's about. Second off, I'm losing my train of thought now as I'm going through this thing. My apology. I had it all set up and I'm like, hell. But just for general information, 85% of my kids are credit deficient or for other reasons, whether it's SARB issues or whatever it is, they're coming to us and they seek us out. I am not currently going at any, I'm not going to any school. I'm not actively recruiting kids to come away. These are kids who are leaving because they have been told they either cannot graduate or they cannot survive in the situations that they're in. Pure and simple. This is what we do. I'm taking the problems from other districts and we're fixing them, because these kids would never graduate without us. I've got a bunch of kids out here that can tell you the same thing. If we weren't around, they wouldn't graduate. They'd be on your street corners, they wouldn't be working. It's as simple as that. I am fixing the problem for you, and that's what we do for a living. So that's what we're just asking. We're just asking to have more room to better educate my kids so that they can go on and be successful and go to school, excuse me, go to school, get in the military, get a job, whatever it is they want to do, because that's what we do for a living, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one question.
We, we have, we have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And Commissioner Porter, if you'd just hold on. We appreciate the enthusiasm. We're not trying to be bad guys, but if we could keep cheering and applause down, we understand that, that this is an emotional and very important, but if we can keep the applause down between each one, okay, and just let people go, we'll be able to focus more, and then you clap all you want at the end.
Yes, ma'am.
The application was for 250 students total. Now, can you explain the 1392 that they, that the Victor Elementary School District?
That number's for 14 sites through three counties. We have, we have 14 different centers through three different counties, so that was for the entire Oro Grande Mojave River program itself.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. We're going to go through all the cards now, and if you're the representative, stand by, there may be more questions for you, sir, at the end.
If it may please the chair, I'm also representing the applicant, and if, I'm happy to wait, or...
Go ahead, as applicant name, name for the record, please.
Thank you. So my name is Greg Forrest, and I am an attorney representing Mojave River Academy. I did submit written comments, so you have a comment letter from me. I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself, and I also wanted to let you know who we have on behalf of the charter school in attendance tonight, and then run through some of those issues and give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you had as they pertain to some of the legal issues. So, as I mentioned, I'm an attorney. I've made my focus of my career on land use matters. I used to serve as staff for a planning agency, and so I've had a focus on zoning and environmental matters. More recently, for the last few years, I've been working for Young Mini and Core, which is a law firm focused in California exclusively on representing charter schools. I work in the facilities team at Young Mini and Core. Young Mini and Core actually was involved with the Anderson litigation that you've noted in the staff materials. That case involved a resource center that was operating outside of a school district boundaries, and there, it was actually quite a shocking decision because at that time, the state board had granted an opinion that found that these resource centers could operate under those circumstances legally, and so this changed the status quo, and it then caused the state board to issue waivers across the state. So as was mentioned, this is a statewide problem, and there are literally hundreds of resource centers that are going through a similar process. Also, as noted in that case, there are statutory exemptions that allow charter schools to operate under these circumstances. In this case, this charter school looked for sites within the Oro Grande School District boundaries, and in your materials, you have an opinion from a real estate consultant that performed that search. As there were no sites that were available, it then enabled the school to obtain a charter that authorizes it to operate this center in this location. My understanding is they've operated this center now for approximately four years, and they're now seeking to expand the facility into new suites within the center. That decision has been made by the Oro Grande School District. The school district board met on January 17th and granted that charter approval. Prior to making that decision, the school districts, many of whom are here tonight and have expressed opinions about this case, were notified of that action. They chose not to participate in that process. That process has been completed, and the school is now legally authorized to operate in this site under the education code. Obviously, your task tonight is to determine conformance with your own standards, namely your zoning code and those land use regulations that you ordinarily contend with. And in the review of the materials, I'm sure you've noted that as this site has been existing and in operation for several years, there have been no complaints, no issues related to any of those land use conformity matters, and so we would ask that you allow the conditional use permit to be granted to allow the school to operate in an additional suite within this building. I would also be remiss if I did not address some of the opposition that we've received from these neighboring school districts. I think it's important for you to understand the context in which those comments are made, and to do so, you really need to understand the way that schools are funded in the state of California. School funding in California is based on enrollment. It's based on the number of kids that show up every day on average daily attendance. Charter schools survive based on their ability to attract students. The students that come to this school, that love this school, that have dressed up in their T-shirts and came here tonight when I'm sure they had other things they could have done, they did that because they need this school. This is an opportunity for them to find an educational system that works for them, and they have the opportunity and they can make the choice to go to a regular district school if they choose, and many do. Very often, our students do not remain at the school for their entire educational career, but they come to make up credit and then very often find themselves back in a traditional school setting. We would ask that you allow them to continue to make that choice. We would ask that you maintain competition within the educational system. We ask that you approve this permit tonight to allow that competition to remain. If there's any questions on that, or on any of the legal issues, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Not at that point, but once again, there may be at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a card from Lauren Franquois.
Hi, my name is Tim Norton. I'm a member of the Victor Valley Union High School District, Board of Education, trustee. Quickly, I concur in accordance with your comments, Mr. Chairman, concur wholeheartedly with the comments that were submitted by Victor L. And then just want to, before I make some official comments, make some comments that are applicable to what was just said. The gentleman said that the Supreme Court ruled against a resource center in operation outside the school district. That's exactly what we're talking about here. A resource center operating outside of the school district, Oro Grande, now operating in Victor Bell and Victor Valley Union High School District, Supreme Court ruled against it. Whether or not that was a surprise to them or not, really is beside the point. It's the law. His concern was that he wants to let the competition exist. Let's have competition between the, the schools. That's absolutely fine with us. Let them come to us as the founding district school board and ask for a charter from us. We have a charter that's approved right now with this charter school. We're not against charter schools. We just want them to do it the right way. We want them to come to us, to come to Victor L, and request a charter instead of going to Oro Grande and then saying, oh, well, we don't have any room in Oro Grande, so that allows us to build 14 other little units all around? That, that's, that's a backdoor way of getting around the law. So if they want competition, we're more than happy to give it to them, but let them do it the legal way. Now, I'll start my official comments. On January 17th, 2018, the Oro Grande Education School Board, Governing Board, approved petition for establishment and operation of Mojave River Academy Oro Grande Charter School. Mojave River Oro Grande Charter School is a non-classroom-based independent study charter school that proposes to operate out of the same resource center located at 12384 Palmdale Road, Victorville, California, at which the Mojave River Academy Charter School is currently operating resource center. Your backup reading material for this item identifies that the Mojave River Academy Charter School will cease operation at that property at issue effective June 30th, 2018, with the end of their waiver, and the new charter school, the Mojave River Academy Oro Grande Charter School, will commence operations on that property after that date. Under these conditions, the conditional use permit provided to Mojave River Academy's Charter School does not have a beneficial interest in the property in question because it ceases operation at that property on June 30th, 2018, which is just two months away. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. I am Lauren Franquois, part of Victor Valley.
And the last speaker was, Tim Ray, okay, I've got your card, thank you.
So I would like to start with the comment made by the lawyer, Mr. Forrest, because it is true that they have occupied that space, but effective June 30th, 2018, the extension granted by the state of California will expire. It is rather unusual that an institution would seek a two-month extension or an opportunity to expand, because it is our contention, according to the law and what Mr. Moselwhite asserted, that they are an independent charter school, at which case, on effective June 30th, 2018, it will not be a validly authorized charter school. The charter school statute does not authorize or approve of a non-classroom base, which is an independent study charter, that which Mojave River seeks, with a facility outside the boundaries of the authority of the school district, which is Oro Grande, and within the same county of San Bernardino. A charter school must operate within the geographical boundaries of the school district that approves the charter, according to ED Code. And that, from ED Code, the charter school statute does not permit a non-classroom-based independent study charter to locate a resource center outside the geographical boundaries of the authorizing school district and where the resource center is in the same county as the authorizing school. And the lawyer, Mr. Forrest, was correct. That is the decision from Anderson and Shasta, and it stands, and they will become that effective June 30th, 2018. These statutes make it clear that Mojave River Academy Oro Grande Charter School will be a non-classroom-based independent study charter and cannot operate within our school district or that of Victor L. The statutory expect, exception relied on by their school district to approve their charter, with a facility located outside the boundaries of Oro Grande, only applies to classroom-based charter schools and does not apply to independent study schools, such as which they seek as of June 30th, 2018. ED Code is very clear, and it allows the charter school to locate outside the boundaries of the school district that approved the charter and within the same county in which the authorizing school, which is Oro Grande, is located if, among other things, the charter has tried to locate, which they indicated, a single-use facility. The exception applies to classroom-based charters only. It does not apply to independent study charters, which they will become as of June 30th, 2018.
Good evening. My name is Penny Edmiston. I'm a board member of Victor Valley, excuse me, Union High School District, as well as a fourth grade teacher in the elementary district. And while I know this can be a very confusing decision to make, I think what's at the crux of this matter is that there are laws in place, there are regulations, and they're being bent to the point that they're being broken. I commend the students for loving their school and loving their teachers. As a fourth grade teacher, I appreciate that. I understand how important it is for education and for the students to be participating and involved in their schools. I think the expansion is another issue. The students who are currently there, receiving the education is one thing, but their permit to obtain an expansion violates what clearly was set by the Shasta ruling. The Oro Grande School District obtained a waiver from the State Board of Education on December 13th, 2016, waiving the following portions of the ED Code sections, 47605-A, A5, 1, and 1D. This waiver was obtained to permit the Mojave River Charter to continue operating at its existing resource locations through only June 30th, 2018, two more months. The State Board of Education approved this waiver only until that time. This means... This means that the statutes that allow a charter school to locate outside of the Oral Grand boundaries, if a suitable location is not available, were not in effect with respect to Oral Grand when its governing board approved the Mojave River Charter. The Oral Grand Governing Board approved the Mojave River Charter outside its boundaries and within the Victor Valley Union High School District boundaries without a statutory basis for doing it. When you make your consideration, I know that these students are in your mind. They're all of our responsibility. We all are a community of adults, and we're all concerned for the education of our students that go here. I'd like you to consider the academic achievement of the students, the course offerings and programs that they have, the quality of curriculum, the graduation rates, and the training and credentialing of their staff. In addition, Mr. Kirth, may I please offer you an independent study about charter schools that may help in your decision?
Yes, please. I'll pass that around.
Okay, I'll make this brief since everyone's heard about all the legalese involved in this situation, but it sounds like the argument for Mojave River Academy is that we need competition. Well, in the Victor Valley High School District, we have eight choices, and Victorville Elementary, they have 17 choices. So I think the idea of competition has been more than met because students could attend any of those high schools that they wish. If they have an issue at one school, they can go to another school. So from my point of view, this is not necessary.
And each district currently has two charters.
That's correct. Okay, so that's another choice. All right. That's it.
Thank you. And your name, please?
Jose Barrios.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Ron Williamson. I'm the superintendent for Victor Valley Union High School District, and I personally want to thank the students for coming in, the students that we have here, but we're speaking on behalf of the 10,000 students that we have at Victor Union High School District. I'm not going to repeat some of the things that's been said, and we embrace competition, and we do not believe that the students that are just attending Mojave River are those students that are not being successful in our particular district. And we have resources that we can provide to those students for them to be successful. I know that they're probably enjoying themselves at Mojave, but we kind of look at this as a step around the process because normally they would come to either Victor Union High School District and apply with a petition or Victor Elementary School. That's the normal process. The waiver that was given to them until June 30, this is, kind of limits the options that they have, and we feel that they are not really utilizing the process as intended, and that's why we're here in opposition to it.
I have other cards from the Union High School District. Barbara Dew. And then Vargas Corona. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Dr. Antonia Vignoki, and I'm at 1635-0 Mojave Drive, Victorville. And as a classroom teacher in middle school, I teach seventh grade English, Language Arts, and Social Studies, and Film Studies. I also would like to commend the students. It was always nice, no matter where they are. I've taught many students at this district, probably over 1,000 in the few years that I've been here. My focus on speaking today deals with the testing scores. As an academic teacher, I have many students that come back to me and back to my school who have been at charter schools, regardless if it's at Mojave or the others. They come back, they're below credits, they're in a worse situation than they were when they left, because sometimes they start with us, move off, and come back, and it's like, what happened to you the four months you were gone? And these are some of the statistics that I'd like to report from the school dashboards. So the first one is overall in math. Overall in math covers the topics of analysis, number sense, math reasoning, and computation, among others. Victor Senior, our high school district, has in the seventh grade, those who are met or exceed at 21% in math. Mojave River has five. In eighth grade, Victor Valley has 19 in math, and Mojave River has three. At 11th grade, it's 16 to 2. In English, seventh grade Victor High has 35% versus 18 in Mojave for English Language Arts, and that covers reading comprehension, language writing, research inquiry, those type of items. Eighth grade, 3% at Mojave River and 34% at Victor. And 11th grade, 23% Mojave River, and 11th grade, 48% at Victor. Obviously, you can see that the scores vary. The percentages nationwide also reflect different kinds of items. In research inquiry, the skills are analysis, informative, problem-solving, situations and solutions, the highest level of application and life skill and thinking. The longer they're with us at Victor Valley, the higher the scores go. Seventh grade starts at 18, eighth grade to 16, and 11th grade up to 25. At Mojave River, it's 1.3, 1.6, and .5 in the 11th grade. Statistics are the way are. Numbers are numbers, and we deal with citizens, we deal with children, we deal with people. It's interesting to me that the government considers education a product, and you produce an item. I do not see children as products or items. I see them as living human beings that have a structure and a point to become individuals at the expense of their education. No. They are to become individuals at the expense of what we can do and provide for them, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Next card I have is Tom Mistlewhite. That was you. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commission, and thank you for listening to us tonight. I come to you as someone who's grown up in Mojave River Academy. I am currently the director. I started as a teacher. I went to an administrator, assistant director, and I'm now the director. But I also come to you as a mother of five very different kids, and one of them needed an alternative to his education choice, and that's when I found Mojave River Academy. He's 26 now, and he actually made it through college at 26. And it would make me cry if I had to tell you his experience in a comprehensive school. And it's not that I don't think they're great. I have a 17-year-old who is in the top 5% of his class at a comprehensive high school, thriving. He's doing great. But I also had a kid who needed an option, and that's how I found Mojave River Academy first, was as a parent. I was there probably for three weeks when I'm like, you know what? I can probably cross over into the charter world. I feel like there's some benefits to it. Started dabbling part-time as a teacher. I have a credential. We're all fully credentialed. We have to meet all the requirements that every other public school teacher has to meet. So anyway, it gave an opportunity, and then you start to see, wow, like, there are a lot of other kids, like my own kid, that it just wasn't a fit for them, and they needed something else in order to be successful in society. And it touched my heart, and it gave me a passion to say, I want to work with the kids that need that alternative. We don't, when the kids first come to us at Mojave River Academy, every single family meets with an administrator, and we set up what we call a learning plan, and we ask them, what's your plan for education? We hear a lot, I want to go right back to Victor High School. I want to go right back to Silverado. And what we say to that, we've even set up parts of our school to make that transition smooth for all the students, because if that's what's going to make them successful, then that's what we want. And we have a lot of students who transition right back into a comprehensive high school. And the biggest piece, though, just as a business side in a land use permit, is we are providing a service to residents of Victorville. We're helping them to be more successful and to contribute to the communities that they live in, and that's why I think Mojave River Academy is needed in Victorville.
Thank you. And then after Nancy, I have Dr. Heather Griggs, if you want to be ready to stand by.
Good evening, Commission. I'm Nancy Peterson. I'm center administrator in Victorville. I'm also a longtime resident of Victorville. I graduated from Victor Valley High School. I went on and got my degree and came back, and I taught successfully with Victor Elementary School District. And I only say that because I want you to know that at the heart of what we're doing, we're doing it to complement. When I have a student sitting in front of me, ready to enroll, in fact, I had one this morning who came to me, excuse my shaky voice here, but he came to me, he was actually, it was a reach-out from the dean of students over at, I won't say which high school, but anyways, he had reached out. They had a senior who, at that point, was not going to be able to graduate. So we sent him to us, were able to sit down and plan out within the next two semesters what we can do to actually get this kid so he graduates and doesn't have to go and get a GED, he doesn't have to do that kind of stuff. So the main thing that I want you guys to understand is, we have some fine districts here in Victorville. They're like the cruise ships. Cruise ships serve a lot of wonderful people. We all pay to go on vacations, but not every person is served by the cruise ship. Some of our kids need to get on a paddle boat. Some kids need the sailboat. They need to be able to maneuver. They have issues that come to us. When they come to us, you know, we heard all these stats. When they come to us, they are not suddenly, they're not coming to us at grade level and suddenly leaving three grade levels below. That's not what we're seeing. They're coming to us because they've fallen through the cracks. And so what we're doing is taking the time, personalizing, and sending them out in a way that's servicing that individual kid. So with that, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Dr. Griggs?
Good evening. My name is Heather Griggs. I live at 27978 Club Court in Hellendale now, but a longtime resident of Victorville. I came out to Victorville in 1991, fresh out of college, to teach at Victor Valley High School. Taught government there, and as a former government teacher, this is the best lesson in civics you're ever going to get, kids. All government is local. Taught for Victor Elementary District and learned about charters for the first time. My office was out of Sixth Street Prep Charter School for Victor Elementary. Moved up through administration and was working for Santa Ana Unified, supervising their high schools, and an opening came up in Oral Grand, and I live in Silver Lakes. And so I took that opening and have returned back to the desert full-time and have been there for five years. Didn't think I would ever be a charter person. Thought I was that traditional person, but I have changed my mind. I guess that's a sign of old age and maturity, is what I thought was right isn't right. This is good for kids. The first graduation, where I watched 450 MRA students walk across that stage from all over with stories unbelievable, broke my heart. But I have to look at it from a business side. When the Shasta decision came down and we said, okay, you're one of our authorized charters, I'm your authorizer. My board approves it, but you stop at me. What are you going to do? We're going to go to Sacramento, and we're going to get a waiver for a year. Okay, then what's your game plan? Because many charters through the state are going to authorize through different places. And they said, but the Shasta decision says that if there's nothing located in Oral Grand, we can open one center. Okay. I said, or you could try to find something in Oral Grand, because it's small up here. You can, kids can come from anywhere into Oral Grand. Couldn't find a location. Can't afford to build a location. Can't do that. So they decided to split into separate charters, change everything about what they're doing, give up any reserve that they have, and take that risk. They're stepping out at ground zero at every single one of those new charters. New rules, new enrollment, new everything. I said, why don't you go to the school that you're in? And it was a question I asked and drilled them on. Why aren't you going to there? And they said, because you treat us like family here. Because all of our money runs directly through the county coffers. There's no hidden dollars. Every dime comes into the district and gets run through the county school system, and they love the accountability. They love the accountability of having, every teacher that teaches for them is the exact same credentials that has to teach for me at Oral Grand Elementary School. They like that every one of their administrators has a full administrative credential. They like the professional development that they contract back through for us. They like that accountability. They said it lets them hold their head high and know that they're a charter that's making a difference that way. So I agreed to charter them that way. Could I answer any other questions? I'd be happy to.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Chairman, esteemed commission. My name is Paul Casilla. I'm a local commercial realtor. I happen to reside in the city of Adelanto, and I'm here this evening just to read this letter into the record. This letter is intended to go on record on behalf of our landlord, Mr. Ashley Crongold, and his support, as well as Mr. Paul Casilla, a senior commercial sales and leasing associate, and myself. I should put some context here. The letter is written by my broker, Mr. Joseph Brady. And please bear with me, this is my first public speaking. And myself, who are responsible for the leasing of our center, Victorville Village, located at 12384 Palmdale Road, Victorville, California. As president of Joseph W. Brady, Inc., DBA The Bradco Companies, and the firm responsible for leasing the facility, we initially leased space for Mojave River Academy at 12384 Palmdale Road in Victorville, California, consisting of approximately 3,272 square feet, in suite numbers 201 and 202, which initially commenced July 1, 2014. From that time to present, they have been an exceptional tenant within the facility. There has not been any complaints registered that we know of. They have tendered an additional offer to lease additional space at 12384 Palmdale Road, Suites 205 and 206, which also consists of 3,272 approximate square feet. That was submitted on or about November 1, 2017. We are hopeful that the City of Victorville's Planning Commission will continue its history of approving conditional use permits for similar charter schools to allow the Mojave River Academy to increase learning to those children that wish to attend this excellent charter school. The issue before you tonight is a land use issue. It has nothing to do with issues at the state of California, and I'm hopeful that all of the planning commissioners understand the difference between the land use issues and their continued adherence to the land use issues relative to the state of California that have nothing to do with your issuance of an additional conditional use permit allowing the expansion. On behalf of Mr. Crongold, the owner, Mr. Sam Kermanian, the property manager, and The Bradco Companies, we truly appreciate the City of Victorville's Planning Department issuing a conditional use permit for an extremely well-thought-of and highly respected charter school, Mojave River Academy. If I can be of any assistance, please do not hesitate in contacting me. I can be reached at my office at 760-951-5111, extension 101, or by email at jbrady@thebradco.com, or on his personal cell phone between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM daily, 760-954-4567. I do apologize for not being able to make the presentation this evening as I have a conflict in my schedule. I have asked Mr. Paulie Casilla to read this letter into the record to be sure that it is part of your record. Very truly yours, Joseph Brady.
Thank you.
Hi. As you know...
Hi, as you know, you know, you just said my name. I'm Cameron Matthews. I am a senior at Mojave River Academy here in Victorville. And I feel as if we do need to expand upon the school because people don't understand really how much it's helped students. Throughout my school year, elementary, middle school, high school, stuff like that. Middle school and elementary school was a pretty tough time for me. I I suffered through bullying and a lot of other things that I won't get into. And I have ADHD, so I'm very distracted of my surroundings. I get distracted very easily. And I find Mojave River to be a very good candidate of of, hmm, what's the word? Of one-on-one teaching for other students that have a hard time learning things. And people, like the woman over here said, that how the students have, like, they have, they need to make up they need to make up credits and then they go to a charter school and then come back and then their credits are worse than it was before. It's not, it's because of the students. They don't want to commit to the schoolwork that they have to do. It's not because of the teachers itself. It's because of the students. It's the students' fault that they're getting behind in their credits and not wanting to make a future for themselves. I want to make a future for myself. I've been in Mojave River for four years since my ninth grade year. And it's helped me a lot. It's made me learn a lot of new things. It's gave me more opportunities than that, than I thought there was. And I'm thinking about going to college and becoming a pathologist after I graduate. And I think for the younger students around the areas, they need to experience the one-on-one teaching with other teachers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have a card here from a student. I can't quite read. I think it's Benjamin? Got it. Thank you.
Sorry, my handwriting is very bad. My name is Benjamin. I am a student at Mojave River Academy. And most of the students, including myself, had a past either from childhood or school. I got suspended in third grade and failed. And had troubles in fourth, fifth, sixth, and almost dropped, not dropped out, failed seventh grade. So I went to Mojave River Academy in eighth grade, I believe. I was almost one of those students who didn't want to make a future for myself, as he was saying. And teachers got me motivated, wanted me to learn. And I was getting there, my grades were starting to raise. And graduated eighth, moved on to ninth, so on and so forth. Grades are starting to rise. And I want to go to college now to become an EMT or a fitness trainer, maybe both. And someone over here, I don't know exactly who, was talking about numbers and only a certain amount graduate or credits and whatnot. It is like, I don't see him over there. Was saying, it is the student. I've seen, out of the time I've been there, five students who have gotten kicked out because they are not making a future or an education for themselves. And that is my statement. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Michelle Heaton? And then after Michelle, I have Sam Chan, if you want to be on standby.
Hello, good evening. I'm Michelle Heaton. My son is a student at the MRA Riverside Academy. And I will tell you right now, he has gone through too many schools to be an eighth grader. We have been failed multiple times by public schooling where he was just given a coloring sheet, I kid you not, in fifth grade because the math teachers failed to serve him and help him excel in that grade and excel in that subject. When I asked the school, I sat down, spoke with the teachers, had a meeting with the principal, they seriously told me that they do not have enough time to stop and answer questions during that subject. They had to continue on for the more advanced students so that they may continue with their level of what the school thought was everyone's level. And it's not. Right now, my son is sitting next to his math teacher. He requested that. As we sat down originally, he wanted to move seats. That's how much he enjoys his math teacher now. He was coming into Mojave River Academy at the end of fifth grade, so he's been there for about three years now. He came in probably at a second grade math level in the fifth, sixth grade curriculum needed. He's been offered multiple help through tutoring, one-on-one with the math teachers, extra help from the other teachers, and even having peers help him through tutoring as well. It's an amazing program and these kids that cannot fit into the strict guidelines that these public schools are offering. The charter programs give them that chance to have more improvement for themselves to get themselves ready for their next step in life. And my son has other learning disabilities that the schools told us. There was nothing that they really could do about it to go to online schooling. Online schooling doesn't give him that social interaction, doesn't give him the knowledge and the chance to learn, the respect to interact with adults or people of management when he goes out into the workforce and gets a job. And anything else that he wants to put his mind to that I know he'll achieve because he has an entire school of teachers right now that back him. He's not just a student for one of their teachers. The entire, the whole teaching staff at Mojave River Academy has helped him. And all of them know him and I believe that they enjoy him as much as he enjoys going there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I started this school year teaching at the center over by Victor Street near the DMV. And at the beginning of this semester, the third week in the semester, on a Friday morning, our director of personnel, Mr. Bell, came to me and asked me, how do you feel about transferring over to the West Victorville, which is at 12384 Palmdale Road? I replied, the kids that I already met in the first semester, I've built a bond with them. And it's a little difficult for me to leave them. But I said to him, you're my employer. If that's what you request, I'll move over to West Victorville. And the kids that I serve, several of them, they tell me that it's, they're just victimized in the traditional schools. They're ridiculed, they're beat up, and so forth to come here. And from last semester, I had one student, she said to me that she has trouble reading. She said she does not dare to tell the teachers that she had at the traditional schools. But she felt very comfortable letting me know that. And this semester, I have a student who told me that she wanted to participate in athletics. And the coach ridiculed her for her physique. And she held her, she held her mouth. She knew that if she let her know how dissatisfied of being spoken to that way, she'll end up at the principal's office and so forth. Now, when I came over to this Palmdale Road, we installed two desks in this area. One is for a lantern stove that was hard and this one is mine. You can see it's, my desk is immediately in front of the washroom. So it's very congested and that's what we're asking. We're just building an extension to serve the increased number of students. And he mentioned that we want to treat kids as people. And that's more important to me. My job, I see it much more as social work, more than academic. I provide both, but I have a heart. When I go and see my kids, I lay out my heart. And it's about treating them as people. It's social work. And I, I'm just very appreciative in the, in the in the support that I can provide to my students. I love it.
Thank you. I have a card from Gianna Brown. And then next up is Isaac Hinatoso.
Hi, my name is Gianna Brown. I'm a senior at the Mojave River Academy in West Victorville. I've been taken out of schools and put in different schools since I've been in high school. And it seems to me that no one is there to, you know, understand or help with one particular student. So I, once I transferred to Mojave River, I found that I'm here to learn, they're willing to help, and they're going to push you through whether you have problems or you work or anything. Versus in a regular school, you don't have that. It's, we're going to teach this whether you know it or not. If you don't know it, they pass by you like a statistic. And coming from a house of five girls, I'm being the oldest, I don't want to be a statistic. I don't want a GED. I want to graduate. I want to work. And I don't feel that in regular schools. I've had problems with bullying. I've had problems with peer pressure. I've had problems with a lot of things in high school. I've been depressed and all types of other. And I always felt like there was no way out. But then I seeked to Mojave River and I found that I'm happy here. I can learn. I'm willing to sit here and understand what's going on. Versus in regular schools, they're not there to help. They say they are and know this. Now, being in regular school, I've been called out of my name by teachers and all types of other things. How does that make a student feel? If you're here to teach, why are you calling me dumb? See? So in teachers, they say that they're there to help, but they're not. And I personally feel this from own experience. I've been in public school a while. And I never felt happy. I never felt like I was going to make it. I always felt like this is it. It's been a point to where I've been in a mode to where I was going to give up. There was no way out for me. I couldn't pass. And I was bringing home report cards with F every semester. To where it was a point, what am I doing? Why am I here? At one point in time, I felt like there was no existence for me. But then Mojave River, they helped me exceed in everything that I was failing in. The top of classes, my grades went up and they haven't dropped. And me personally, I feel like I've done it on my own, but I wouldn't have done it without the help of Mojave River. So for any kid that in Mojave River, they're there for a reason. They're not there for, oh, competition or anything else. They're there to learn. Mojave River is providing something that a public school won't provide, whether they see it or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Isaac?
Hi, I'm Isaac's mother and he had to go to a scholarship recognition at his soccer club team, so I'm on the list too to speak. So I kind of want to speak a little bit for him.
What was your name?
Olivia Enriquez.
Thank you.
And I want to speak on the positive parts of Mojave River. And I want to let you know that my son has attained a full academic scholarship to La Sierra University in Riverside as well as an athletic scholarship. He is, he's, his SATs, he's scored extremely high. He's not your average story that you hear at-risk students. And I feel like there would be more. He would be the more typical type of student if these resources were available as far as a bigger school, more things, resources for these kids to have. So I keep hearing that he's not the typical story, but I feel like there could, there could be many like him. I have a son that graduated from Mojave River and he's at UCR. I also have a daughter that's a sixth grader and she competes, she dances and she competes. And she, so many of her peers ask her, where does she go to school? So many of them would want to be involved at her school because they see how happy she is, her academics, she's very intelligent. And I just wanted to let you know that I have two kids that are at universities and it's, it's, it can happen. I just feel that we're not your typical story, but we can have a lot more students like this if we had the resources.
Florentino Zamudio, and then we have Gregory Forrest after him.
Hello, my name is Florentino. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your time. I listened to everybody here to talk about Mojave River and why we love our school. I initially attended Victor Valley High School when I started going to high school. Ninth grade year, I did alright, but tenth grade year is when I started, my decline started. I failed most of my classes. And I was projected to not graduate unless I took some sort of summer school or find some way to take extra classes. I attended Mojave River Academy after a friend told me about it. And immediately after I arrived to Mojave River Academy, it didn't just feel like a school. It felt like the teachers were there to help you and understand what you really are doing. They help you with your problems. They don't only help you educationally, but they help you if they see you're down, not only if you're crying, if they actually see that you're sad or any way, they will help you. They are like your family members. And I believe that is like one of the greatest things that you could have at school. Because a lot of students feel uncomfortable even talking to teachers about their problems, whether the teachers say they're there for them or not. At Mojave, you actually feel comfortable talking to teachers because you know they're there to help you. And you know they're going to help you better yourself and your education. I came to Mojave, not projected to graduate. I initially wanted to go back to Victor Valley High School. But after being there my whole junior year, I decided to stay because of how friendly and helpful the teachers were there. And how, how much I enhanced my academic achievements. I became, I got really good in math. I got really good in English. I excelled in a lot of state testing, like AR testing. So for these people over here to say that us students aren't doing well in academics and state testing is wrong. Because I myself experienced myself passing with 12-plus grades and other states testing and stuff like that. Not every single student will be the same. Numbers don't always tell the truth. Because I myself experienced passing everything, doing everything myself. And not just because, some people might say it was easy. I only passed because it's easy. Going home and doing the work yourself is not easy. You have to take the responsibility and initiative to actually do the work yourself and exceed in other classes. And you have to take the initiative, learn, and actually and actually finish high school and graduate. And I am going to graduate. I will graduate this May and I hope to attend college and become an educational person myself and help other students in their education. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Gregory Forrest? Oh, he was. Okay.
I spoke previously, so.
Yep, thank you.
I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Monique Corio?
Are you a city planner, commissioner, chairman, commissioner, vice chair, secretary? I'm here representing Mojave Center. I want to say that it's very vital for the expansion. On January 9th of this year, my daughter was assaulted at a local school. I won't name the school. She was threatened and the threat was acted out on my child. I had nowhere to go with my child, nowhere that I trusted my daughter to go because the school district failed her. My daughter came from a charter school. I put her in a school district for one year. And she experienced multiple bullying. We did everything that required her to do and they continued to fail her. When I met Mr. Muscle White, he offered my daughter something that nobody can offer my daughter through the blessing of the living Lord that we serve. Because my daughter didn't want to go in school, she was terrified. She went to administration that failed her. They didn't take heed to her saying, Mom, I'm being bullied. This acted out at Mojave River. I can say the parking there, I pull up, I'm there maybe two minutes. If I have to address her teacher, Mr. Chan, I'm in and out within Mr. Chan, I'm in and out within three to four minutes. So if, if they're complaining about parking, 30 years ago, when she brought that property, the, the families now in Victorville and Oto Lanto are bigger. I have a family of seven children, they go to four different schools, and like the parents said, I had one child that needed something different, and only Mojave River offered my daughter that. My daughter has learned how to use a website, she's learned how to log in to the program that they gave her. They really need to look into what they're offering these children. They have, they're able to access laptops throughout the day, she's able to sit there and do her work, the, the, the packets that they give them in one week. I'm a college student, I'm a coach. They are academically challenging my daughter the way that she needs to be challenged, like these kids said. They, they weren't coming to do this, but now they're going, they wanna do this with their life, because they're being challenged. They really are. And when I sit with Mr. Chan, it is, there's people going in and out, we need an expansion. And it's not to hurt anybody's feelings, because my mom worked for 36 years with ALAUSD. And you know what, this is why they invented the No Child Left Behind Act, because children were being left behind. Now, no school district wants to come and say, "Take my funds for these children," they don't. But the reality is, these kids need Mojave, and they need it because they're being failed in areas where not as parents were failing them, because my daughter's um, um, option for being bullied was to write a book. She's writing a book right now. And I planned for her to impact other students to say, "Hey, I had a chance out, I had a good, uh, uh, foundation coming up, that the option of suicide behind bullying was not an option." She goes, we're greeted by, um, the young lady, I think she left, beautiful smile, every time you walk in, it could be raining, thundering, she still smiles, "Hi, how are you?" That is so welcoming for a parent that has to come and trust the facility to teach their child. Another thing I wanted to discuss, the only laws that are being broken, ma'am...
If you could wrap that up, because it...
Oh, sure, the only laws that are being broken are the laws of our children being, basically, um, not being fully meant to their academic, um, standards.
Go ahead. Thank you, sir.
Um, I went to a school that wasn't challenging enough, and certain things I didn't understand, they did just pass me on. And I feel at Mojave River, I'm welcome, and I can go and do my work, and talk to the teachers when needed. And they're just so comforting, and at regular schools, they just pass you on, they, kids bully you and pick on you for certain things that you don't have. And at Mojave River, everybody's so welcoming, the kids don't judge you. I thought when I first walked in, I was gonna get judged, and Mojave River didn't judge me, they let me in, and they've just been so helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have, uh, Deshaun Dickinson?
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Deshaun Dickinson, I reside at 43712, 32nd Street East, Lancaster, California. Uh, I just want to, you know, speak out, I've been a proud employee of Victor Valley Junior High School District for the last 22 years. I currently am the Director of Classified Personnel, but my background for 13 of those years in the district, I work special ed. I've seen lots of parents come up tonight, and students come up tonight and talk about programs that the charter offers, and I'm just here to remind you, this is not about programs, per se. This is about them doing it the right way, handling the process. The charter expires in a few months, and if they really wanted to offer a charter ongoing, they should have followed the right process and come to the districts that respectively are affected, Victor Elementary and Victor Valley Junior High School District. But let's talk about programs. I can't speak to what Victor Elementary offers, but I can speak to what Victor High School District offers. We have some of the best programs for all children, special needs, gay, straight, handicap, high achievers, low achievers. We have a great independent program in our school district. We offer it at a school called the Goodwill Education Center. We offer multiple special ed classes. And for the students who came out and spoke tonight, I commend you, because I know it's very nervous, and can be very nerve-wracking to come up and speak in front of a crowd, and it breaks my heart here about any child being bullied, but we have bullying prevention. We did a huge bullying prevention month in October, which is National Bullying Month, or whatever. So let's keep it about the facts and keep it about doing it the right way. And you're right, it's about doing the best thing for the kids. And in my personal opinion, no disrespect to a charter, but the resources that a public education school has, a charter could never come close, especially with their small numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I think we heard from, uh, Mr. Flynn, is that correct? Mr. Flynn? We haven't yet? Okay. I have, I have your card, I'm sorry.
I, I'm Bill Flynn, I'm the CBO for Oral Grand School District. Um, I've been a resident of the Victor Valley for 46 years, and been with Oral Grand School District for about three years now. Um, first thing I wanna say is, I, I wanna compliment the City Planning Department. They, they've been fantastic to work with. I've worked with many planning departments over the years in several different cities, and you guys have one of the best, so I appreciate you guys. Um, there's a lot of things that I had kinda planned to say, but I don't think I can say them any better than, than the students and the parents and the, uh, the staff of Mojave River have said. I, I just wanna maybe hit a couple of pieces of compliance that, that, that I've heard, and I wanna respond to those. My job is compliance for the Oral Grand School District. So when, you know, Mojave River was, you know, planning to do this whole piece, my job was to ensure that the Oral Grand School District was in compliance with the law in everything that they did. That was my responsibility. I, you know, I answer to the Board of the Oral Grand School District and the superintendent to ensure that that happens. And, you know, there's just, it, it almost feels like silly things that were accusations made in, in some of the, the things provided by the school districts. One, that they, they didn't receive some of the documents, like the transition plan, and, and some notification letters, and I have certified mail receipts, if, you know, you'd like to see those, that, that they did in fact receive all of those things. It was mentioned that the exception does not apply to independent study charters, and I know that that's in some of the documentation from our attorney, but I also kinda find that a little bit ironic, since that was the argument of the charter school in the Shasta court case, was they were saying, these are independent study sites, so the, the site locations should, don't apply, um, to them, and, and that was ruled against. It said if you are inside the county, you are a school site, and the site restrictions and exceptions apply to you. Um, so you can't just take one piece of the law that you like, that it says you, you can't operate, and not, not take the whole ruling in the Shasta case. Um, and so, you know, the big thing with charter schools so often is the accountability piece. And, and I, I think that's the one amazing thing, I've been in charter for 20-plus years, and one of the amazing things about the Mojave River Academy and its connection, close connection with Oral Grand, is that it is, uh, does have a tremendous amount of accountability. All of their money runs through the county, um, the county, you know, just like a traditional school district would run their purchase orders and payroll and all that sort of thing, they all run it through the county, which is very rare for a charter school. Um, and I think that's about it. I think everything else I was gonna say was covered by everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have for the, uh, public comment. Um, so are there, at this time, are there any, uh, questions for maybe the applicant, uh, from the commission at this time? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, close the public hearing, and I'm gonna bring it back to the commission for, um, any further questions of staff and a deliberation.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, well, first of all, I have no further questions, I mean, everything's been really clear. Um, but I would like to make a motion to find the project categorically exempt per SEQA Section 15301, uh, dash existing facilities, and adopt resolution number P-18-013, approving conditional use permit, case number PLAN18-00018, subject to the attached conditions of approval, uh, based upon A, the allowance of schools in the C1 Zone District and compliance with Title 16 requirements, B, consistency with the land use element of, of the general plan and non-detrimental effects to the public health, safety, and welfare, which are not materially injurious to users, properties or improvements in the vicinity, and C, uh, sufficient adjacent roadway size and access to not overload the capacity of the street, and D, conformance with all applicable standards of Title 16.
Second? I'm gonna ask the city attorney, 'cause I can't remember. Um, we've had a motion and a second. I didn't, I thought there would be a little more discussion, I didn't quite get my question out. Can I have a question of staff at this point, now that we have a motion and a second? Okay. I just wanna make sure the protocol was right, it went kinda quick. Um, Scott, I was wondering, in the workshop, we did talk a little bit, and there was been a lot of discussion tonight about, um, you know, the education code, and there's some disputes. Um, it's been mentioned, a sidestep, or maybe a loophole. Um, and I think that would have a lot to do with the, uh, the overseeing agencies, um, within the state and the county. But did you, can you give me your take on the condition that we have in the staff report that will ultimately require, if I'm not mistaken, um, agency licensings that would have to be shown to the city?
Yeah, so as the Planning Commission, is your jurisdiction to review a quasi-judicial action such as this conditional use permit based solely on the, uh, standards within our municipal code and general plan? It's not the commission's jurisdiction to determine compliance with state education code. But the condition that you mentioned, condition two, if this project is approved, does require that the city verify their compliance. So there's a difference. We can, we can verify compliance with state agencies, but it's not our authority to determine compliance. Um, so, uh, similar to like the Bureau of Automotive Repair, Al, you know, Alcohol, um, ABC, Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, uh, the Medical Board, it's not our jurisdiction as a local authority to, to determine their compliance. We can verify it, and the conditional use permit can be revoked if they are not in, uh, compliance with, in this case, um, the State Board of Education.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I see that now, condition two. Okay, thank you. And then, um, that was it, thank you. The, um, we have a motion and a second. Just to be clear, the motion was for an approval, which would be option A in our staff report, is that correct? Yes. Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh, with the second by Commissioner Huber, to approve the conditional use permit, case number PLAN18-00018, as conditioned in option A. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Motion carries with Commissioner Doo abstaining and Vice Chair Porter voting no.
Okay, so that, that application has passed. I wanna thank everyone who came here tonight to be involved, it was a very important discussion. Um, thank you. Moving on to agenda item Okay, I think we're good.
All right, thank you, Chairman Kurth. Item number five is case PLAN17-00020. It is a site plan and conditional use permit, previously assessed by the Victor Valley Wastewater, I'm sorry, Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority, to allow for the construction of a 21,600 square foot receiving building, in-ground scales, a 3,000 square foot administrative building, and a 2,625 square foot maintenance canopy, a 300 square foot modular break room, and an upgrade to the current composting operation to include a concrete aeration pad at an existing compost facility located at 20055 Shea Road. The applicant, American Organics, under a land lease agreement with VVWR, is requesting approval of this site plan to allow for the expansion and modernization of the current composting facility. The facility's located on 20 acres, um, and is permitted to accept the processing, in processing many forms of organic material. The project will allow American Organics to upgrade their operations with new technology and improvements through the volume of materials processed at the, though the, though the volume of materials processed will remain unchanged. Uh, the upgrades are mainly to, uh, bring the site into compliance with state water board regulations, and it also provides an enhanced mitigation for bird deterrents, as required by, uh, the Southern California Logistics Airport. Uh, the project meets all conditions, and, um, meets all municipal code standards as conditioned, and we're available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll, uh, open up the, uh, public hearing. Is the representative for the applicant, do you have any questions, comments?
Um, no. Commissioner, Chairman Kurth and Planning Commissioner Anthony Bertrand with American Organics, we're the owner and operator of the facility. I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to us on item number five?
I may as well, since I came here. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Logan Olds, I'm the General Manager for Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority, and I am here to show our support for the project. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any questions for the applicant?
No, I'd like to ask, um, Tom down there a question or two. No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, with that, I'll close the, uh, the public hearing portion and bring it back to the commission.
Chairman Kurth, I find the project previously assessed by VVWR, um, adopt resolution number P-17-054, approving the site plan, portion of case number PLAN17-00020, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and adopt resolution number P-17-055, approving the conditional use permit, portion of case number PLAN17-0020, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber, with the second by, by Vice Chair Porter, to approve case number PLN17-00020, as conditioned. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, that's been approved. Item number six, uh, tell us about the Green Tree Bridge.
All right, thank you, Chairman Kurth, fellow commissioners. Um, planning staff and, um, city engineering staff have been working with, um, the engineering consultant, Duncan Engineering, on the aesthetics of the proposed Green Tree Bridge that will go over the BNSF rail line. And, uh, we wanted to bring before you for consideration, um, the, the design that elevates the, the bridge aesthetics above a standard utilitarian design. Uh, we wanted to kinda go through each component with you to get your feedback on it, um, so we can relay that information to the traffic, um, the engineering consultant, so they can finalize the, um, engineering. And Brian, feel free to interject as I, as I run through this. So, um, the, the first graphics in your packet, um, basically give you a site overview of the, the total project area. Uh, the ultimate project will, will connect, um, Green Tree Road where it terminates currently at Hasperia Road, and will extend it to the east, uh, where it will eventually align with Yates Road. Uh, the, the aesthetics in question right now are just the portion that, um, is the elevated bridge area over the rails. Um, similar to... Similar to the, the Yoculoma Road Bridge with Apple Valley, this, this proposed bridge will also have dividers on the side of the bridge where pedestrians would flow, there's a concrete divider there, and it would include, if you're looking on page 657, it's the last, last page of graphics that we have, in the bottom right-hand corner, there is a elevation view of what the concrete barricades there would look like, they have foam liners, liners in them that provide an arch recessed area, portions of the Apple Valley Bridge at Yoculoma also have this type of recessed foam liner with the arch in it, but this, this bridge will also show it on the, the inside area where the vehiculars travel, vehicles travel, and will also be on the pedestrian side. It will not be a full open window, just a recessed area, but, so you, you won't be able to see through it. Now, on the outside of the bridge, we're not required to have a full, hard, concrete, opaque barrier, so what's proposed is a wrought iron design that would start off at forty inches, and then would be elevated to ten feet where it crosses the BNSF tracks, and that's a requirement of BNSF to have that ten-foot barrier when it crosses over their tracks. And I apologize for some of the graphics there, but on the last, last page of graphics there is, it's essentially a picket wrought iron design, so instead of the standard chain link, it would be a, a picket wrought iron that has a, a meshing in between it, so they'll be almost like a, from far away, you probably wouldn't see the mesh, but up close you would. And, there's also decorative light fixtures that would be placed on both sides of the bridge at a hundred-foot intervals, and there's also a place, if the city so chooses in the future to sum up memorialize the, the bridge with a plaque, so there would be areas for that on each side of the bridge. And we're available if you have any questions, Brian, did you wanna add anything?
The, the only thing I'd like to add is that we've been working with our consultant on this for a while, planning and engineering, and although it's, it's not exactly the same as the Yoculoma Bridge over the river, it has somewhat of the same theme, I guess you could say, and also, the other thing I'd like to comment on is, there are some additional costs for the aesthetic features, but they're not, they're not real large costs, so the incremental cost really isn't that much, and to me, it makes a lot of sense to incorporate some aesthetic, aesthetic features into the bridge, I think it's well worth the additional cost. Since the whole project is, you're talking about a forty million dollar project, I think it makes sense to have some aesthetic, aesthetic features.
I, I agree with that, I like the, I like the, the wrought iron, you know, with that mesh, so, so that you have, you get a little bit of view out there in the desert area, so it's not just feel like driving through a tunnel. I like the, the decorative cutouts for the mounted light standards, those look, look nice on the concrete there. I don't, I don't really have any other comments, any other?
No.
Yeah, I guess we like it.
All right, thank you, no motions required.
Item, item number seven is the school needs analysis, any questions or comments on that? Okay, and I forgot to offer up the public comment for Sophie. Lights with the Brown Act, we're here, if Sophie wants to address us on any items that fall in our jurisdiction, Sophie? None, okay. And Commissioner Reports, we can start with Commissioner Marsh? Commissioner Porter?
Nope.
Um, I'd like to say that we, Commissioner Marsh and I actually had the opportunity to go to, to the League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Convention last week, and I would like to state for the record that I think all that attended, speaking for you, Paul, too, I think, it was very well worth the trip, in my opinion, I, you know, we spent three days going through, you know, some of the various different classes and training, you know, opportunities, and I really did learn a lot, I felt like I came back with, with more tools and more confidence in this job we do called Planning Commission, so, you know, if there's another opportunity in the future, and anyone's up to it, I, I recommend it. That's all I have. Commissioner Huber?
No comments.
I sure do. Um, any comments from staff members?
Not at this time, thanks.
Okay, with that, thank you, meeting adjourned.